Acting Chairman.
Yeah, so what do I have to announce just to open the workshop session? Just that we're beginning the workshop session of the Planning Board Meeting of the City of Beacon for January 9th.
We'll follow thereafter.
Planning Board Meeting will follow thereafter at 7:30. Thank you.
Perfect. So, in our work session meeting, which will go about 15 minutes or so until 7:30, we are going to, as we do every January, Happy New Year everyone by the way, we're going to go through our current City of Beacon Planning Board Rules of Procedure for Public Meetings. So, really exciting stuff on this rainy evening. The rules of procedure are posted on the website, on the City of Beacon website, and they're also available in the agenda materials for tonight's meeting. These rules of procedure were adopted in 2018, and they have not had any amendments since that time, but we do review these every year just to make sure that board members are familiar with them, that the public is familiar with them, and just to see if the board has any questions or wants to make any changes. So, preliminarily, the authority for the Planning Board to adopt these rules of procedure comes from the City Code in Section 45-7, which authorizes both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board to adopt rules and regulations to govern its procedure. It is not a local law, so this is distinct from what the City Council does at its meetings, adopting legislation. These are sort of a lesser version of local laws, and it's meant to be supplemental guidance on your procedures. It's not intended to supersede any provision of state law or city law. So with that, we'll start on page one. The rules provide that you have regular meetings. There are two kinds of meetings, regular meetings and special meetings. Regular meetings are those that are regularly scheduled. Special meetings, under the law, are those that are called in between regular meetings, sort of on a as-needed ad hoc basis. So you are to hold your meetings on the second Tuesday of every month at 7:30, and your meetings at 7:30 may be immediately preceded by a work session at 7 o'clock here in the courtroom of the Municipal Center, unless otherwise posted or noticed in accordance with lawful requirements. So that's what we do. Every second Tuesday, we have our work session at 7 and our meeting at 7:30. The second section of the rules talk about membership expectations, and this is an important section for each of the Planning Board members to pay attention to because it does outline a lot of your, some of your obligations and your responsibilities, that you are expected to attend all duly noticed meetings of the Planning Board. If you cannot attend for whatever reason, you're to notify the Planning Board Secretary, Mercedes Perez, and the Planning Board Chair of any absence as soon as you're aware of that. One example, tonight Karen will be absent tonight due to an illness, and she emailed Mercedes and the Chair and CC'd myself to let us know. So that is in full effect. Good job Karen. Members are expected to be familiar with all the materials that are submitted to the Planning Board in connection with the applications. Typically, the Planning Board members receive those materials really at the same time as the public. We used to have a process where hard copies were delivered. Now, as soon as the materials are posted online, the Planning Board members have access to them, just like every member of the public. Members are required to complete training, required by law and by the City of Beacon City Council for service as a Planning Board member. Several years ago, back around '07, '08, somewhere around there, there was a state law that came down requiring Planning Board members and Zoning Board members to engage in at least four hours of training related to your service as a Planning Board or Zoning Board member. That four hours of training has to be done within the calendar year, and it is required by law and can be a basis for removal as a Planning Board member. These work sessions that we have in this half hour before every meeting, in a way, were set up to be part of your training. So we do cover substantive materials. As you recall, when John Clark was here, he would provide updates on what's going on at the county from a planning perspective, what's going on at the City Council. There were times when we've had a member of Dutchess County Department of Transportation in to talk about public transportation issues. So this half hour is important because it does serve as part of your training. In addition to that, you also have opportunities with Dutchess County Planning, Dutchess County Planning Federation, New York Planning Federation. There are a lot of organizations that do provide free or low-cost training programs. In addition, members are expected to be familiar with the relevant provisions of the City Code. The next section deals with the chairperson and his or her obligations. The chairperson is the executive officer of the Board and is designated by the Mayor pursuant to code. The chairperson has the responsibilities and authority specified in the code and in the general city law. He or she presides at all meetings and hearings of the Board. Here she has the authority to sign the approved subdivision plots once all the conditions are met, in addition to site plans and any other permit approvals issued by the Board, resolutions, neg decks, et cetera. And the Planning Board Chair also has the authority to call special meetings of the Planning Board from time to time as needed. Excuse me. The next section is Guidelines for Planning Board Members. The rules state that a Planning Board member must be recognized by the presiding officer, so the Chair or the acting Chair, before speaking and/or making a motion, and the member shall address the Chair and shall wait to be recognized. I think this is a formality that is sometimes recognized by the Board, but isn't necessarily implemented at all times. This is a level of formality that sometimes we don't necessarily follow. Conflict of interest is another topic covered by guidelines. You need to be, as a Planning Board member, you need to be aware of any conflict of interest that you may have in a pending application, and if you feel that you do have a conflict of interest, you are to immediately inform the chairperson, the Planning Board Secretary, and the Planning Board Attorney. In the case where you do have a conflict, you do not receive materials for that particular matter, and you leave the Planning Board table during discussion of the matter, don't vote on the matter, and otherwise comply with any state requirements regarding conflicts of interest. In addition to leaving the Planning Board table, as the rules state, my recommendation is always to physically leave the room. That's typically best practices in those circumstances, just to avoid any appearance of undue influence over the Board members. The next section deals with non-disclosure of confidential information. So, in the event that a Planning Board member obtains confidential information by reason of your position as a Planning Board member, you are not to use that information for your personal gain or benefit, or for the gain or benefit of another, and certainly may not disclose that confidential information to anyone not entitled to it. And there's a whole definition of what confidential information means in the rules, which I'm not going to bore you with tonight. The next section deals with meetings, with a note that all meetings of the Planning Board comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Law, which is a New York State requirement that meetings must be held in the open, in public. It does not mean that the public is, has the right to speak at every meeting, but it does give the public the right to listen and see and hear the Board discuss an application and have its deliberations. So that's what's otherwise known as the Sunshine Law in New York. Executive sessions are an exception to that. That's when you are getting confidential advice of counsel, and there's several other instances, threatened litigation, where we can meet outside of the public eye and public ear. Public hearings. The Planning Board may hold public hearings in addition to those required by law. So basically, that means even where a public hearing is not required by state or local law, you have the discretion to still hold a public hearing if you so deem it, to be in the best interest of the public. Site visits is the next topic. You may conduct site visits either as a group or separately, as individual members of the Board. The determination of whether a group site visit will be performed, the rules state that that shall be made at a regularly scheduled meeting. We had this in a recent application where members of the public were asking for a site visit, and that request was made in between meetings, and we discussed that at the next regularly scheduled meeting to decide whether that was going to happen. Site visits are limited to touring and obtaining factual information about the application. It is not intended to be a time for substantive discussion or deliberation. That occurs here at the regular meeting, when you kind of download all of your observations and discuss as a Board. The next section is entitled Proceedings, which states that the Chair is to preside at all meetings of the Planning Board, or in the Chair's absence, the acting Chair. The Mayor in the first instance has the authority to appoint an acting Chair, but if that doesn't happen, or where a member is, that member is absent from the meeting, the Chair has the authority to select the acting Chair. In addition, on the topic of re-noticing a public hearing, under New York State law, the rules here provide that re-noticing a public hearing is not required after the initial public hearing. So when you are opening your public hearing prior to that, proper notice has happened. It's been published in the newspaper, mailings have gone out, sign has been posted if required. If that public hearing is continued to another meeting, that whole process doesn't have to happen again. However, the Board or the Planning Board Attorney may require, in its discretion, re-noticing of a public hearing in certain instances, like where there's been a long adjournment. So if the public hearing is adjourned to the next meeting and then continues to get adjourned and adjourned and adjourned for many, many months without the applicant reappearing, we can require re-noticing. So, the next section deals with the, sort of the process of how an application unfolds before you, and it's entitled "Before Public Comment." So number one, a formal presentation by the applicant and/or the representatives describing the proposal is made before the Board. The Chair then identifies, is to identify all correspondence pertaining to the application that was received from the public and enters that correspondence into the record, and any written materials submitted by the public during the public hearing is given to the Chair and entered into the record. And copies are given to Board members and staff and consultants as well. Regarding motions. When a motion has been made and seconded and is under debate or discussion, no other motion shall be received except to amend, put the motion to a vote, adjourn or table it, adjourn the meeting, or withdraw the motion. With respect to voting. A quorum is defined as a majority of the whole membership of the Board. So we have a seven-member Board, so a quorum is four, not just a majority of the members present at the meeting. And a quorum is required for any formal action of the Board. The ayes and nays of all Planning Board members' votes are recorded in the minutes. I'm just kind of, because of the time, I'm just kind of skimming through some of these. With respect to disqualification, every Planning Board member is required to vote on all questions put to them unless you're going to abstain, and if you're going to abstain, you need to cite a reason for that abstention. Okay, this part is important, and I want to make sure we cover it in like the two minutes that we have left before 7:30. And this is Guidelines for Comments at Public Hearings with respect to Conduct of Speakers. So these are the rules governing members of the public and how they are to conduct themselves when giving public comments, and it's basically a standard of conduct. So number one, speakers must step to the podium to address the Planning Board. Before addressing the Board, the speaker has to give their name, address, and organization, if any, for the record. Speakers must address the members of the Planning Board and shall avoid speaking to any one member directly, or to the applicant, or to the general public present. So there are times when we have members of the public that engage in discussions with other members of the public, or with the applicant directly, or kind of speak to one member of the Planning Board. That is technically against our standards of conduct, and that can be corrected by the Chair. And that's really to avoid animosity and avoid, you know, an uncomfortable situation. A speaker's individual time to speak at a public hearing cannot exceed five minutes. The Chair can reduce that time to three minutes if the Chair determines that it's appropriate due to the circumstances, basically based on the number of items on the agenda or the number of people that want to speak, to give everyone a shot. Speakers have to observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Any statements or comments or remarks made by the speaker shall not concern the motives of a member of the Planning Board, and shall not constitute a personal or political attack or criticism of any member of the Board, an officer of the city, consultant of the city, employee of the city, or the public. So really just be respectful of others, which is actually the next comment, that the audience shall be respectful of all speakers, and refrain from comments and gestures like clapping or cheering or booing. Also, private discussions and cellphone use that would interfere with the comments is prohibited as well. Any speaker that fails to conform to these rules shall be directed by the Chair to cease speaking and yield the floor. And this is important too, that the applicant and the applicant's representatives are not bound by these rules. So the time limitations that apply to public comments don't apply to the applicant and their representatives. They're allowed to speak for the time permitted by the Chair. The other thing I want to note, communications, that Planning Board members are required by the rules of procedure to refrain from initiating or engaging in any communication outside of a public meeting with either the applicant or representatives of the applicant or members of the public about an application before the Board or a matter that's pending or likely to come before the Board. And that's important because sometimes we do get requests from either members of the public or applicants to meet with either the Chair or members of the Board individually, and it's against our rules. This is where all the discussions happen.
That's why I asked you about whether we could make any Facebook postings to try to increase engagement. But I will refrain from doing that based on this discussion.
Yeah, I think, you know, the purpose of that rule is really to make sure, this is where the record is. Social media comments are not part of the record that's before the Board, the record of the application. This is where the decision-making happens. This is where the discussions happen. This is where all the information is shared. So it's important that we kind of keep those lines bright. And let's see, and just kind of wrapping it up, recording of proceedings. So minutes are kept of all of the meetings, and all of these meetings are recorded and available by video or audio, and all of that information is available at the City Clerk's Office in the Building Department. So that's a summary of your rules of procedure. These can be amended from time to time if you see any provisions that you think needs to be, need to be tweaked, or things that should be added. You know, we can certainly address that at a later meeting and vote on a revised rule, set of rules of procedure.
Any comments or questions before we close the workshop? Okay. So we can now open up a regular session of the City of Beacon Planning Board for January 9th, and first agenda item is probably review of the minutes from the last meeting. Has everybody received the email, was it December 12th, minutes? Any comments or corrections from any of the Board members on the content of the minutes?
Yeah, I had two things. Hold on, sorry, give me just one minute to pull this up. Regarding the discussion of 409 Fishkill Avenue, one thing I thought should be in the minutes, something I had asked the applicant about, that it did not appear that the requirements of the proposed religious use conflicted with any requirements in the building code or zoning code. So I moved to amend the minutes to include that first, and then secondly, in our discussion of the local law on parking, although the Planning Board did not reach a consensus on the proposed local law with three members in favor, two against, comma, the following recommendations were discussed. I would tweak that slightly to stay, strike the word although, and say, "The Planning Board did not reach a consensus on the proposed local law with three members in favor and two against," period. If the City, or if City Council adopts the proposed local law, comma, then the following recommendations were discussed, just because I think that does a better job capturing what happened.
I tend to agree with that. It's clearer, the construction is clear, and I think it reflects the gist of what was discussed.
Yeah, I understand. And the first item about 409 Fishkill, what was the, was there, I'm sorry if I missed it, was there an action for the applicant that we were requesting? You said, you asked the applicant to confirm that the religious use didn't conflict with any, I'm not sure, I didn't quite catch the thrust of what the action was or the request.
I had asked whether it looked like, based on current designs and understandings, any requirement of the proposed religious use. So this is there on the agenda again tonight, it's taking over the car dealership. If any requirements of the proposed religious use appeared to conflict with building code or zoning code requirements, and they said they didn't think so.
Okay, so the main thing you want to get to the minutes is reflecting that answer that they gave? Or did you want to get into the minutes that they're, they didn't think so was an open-ended answer and that we had an action for them to go back and look at it further, or no?
No, I just wanted it documented that as being stand, it does not, they're not maybe taking the position that we need to, you know, for example, it just off, just not an off-the-wall example, because I know there was an appellate division case that concerned this and overturned a zoning board. Somebody was building some sort of a religious temple, part of the design called for this really tall spire of some sort. It was outside the zoning code, they didn't grant a variance, and that was later overturned in the appellate division. So the question is simply.
I understand, yep.
Yep, yeah. We have something like that going on here.
Okay, Mercedes, you have any questions or clarification? Are you all good with those corrections?
But we should actually, if people are in agreement, someone should second that motion, and then we should vote on it.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
My motion, Kevin second. Sorry, I was chairing meetings not too long ago.
No, no, that's great, I appreciate it. I'm not, okay, so meeting minutes, address for those will be corrected, and, all right, so then we can move on to our first agenda item, which is back to the SGI application, correct? And does the applicant want to approach the podium, and maybe, do we want to start out by reviewing the comments that are outstanding, and then have the applicant respond, or what's your, John, what's your?
I would say let the applicant present the project and explain what changes, if any, have been done. Then we'll usually go through whatever comments we may have, or he can speak, and then come to the consultants. We'll go through our comments.
All right, great.
Well, hi, good evening, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
So, we did have an abbreviated amount of time to address all the technical comments, but we were able to knock a few of them out, but I'll just go through a couple highlights of some of the things that were changed here. First and foremost, the concrete curb and sidewalk along Fishkill Avenue is all going to be replaced, and I believe that Dave was big on that, I believe. So we had shown some of that before, but after discussing with the applicant and the owner, we're going to be able to move forward with freshening that up with the new sidewalk, which is, which is pretty necessary when you go out there and look at it. We were also able to incorporate a number of mulched, shrubbed areas to mix in with some of the street trees that were shown. We did some infill along the back with some of the existing white pines along Conklin and Mead to fill in some of the areas where some of those were dead, and to help continue that screening effort from the residential neighborhood. And we were able to make a couple of configuration changes that allowed us to continue to further reduce the impervious area. If you look at the, at this plan, this is the existing conditions and removals plan, so basically everything in the red on the outside and in the middle over here, and some on the outside over here, is pavement that we're removing and replacing with green area. So we're able to reduce the impervious from what was currently 86% down to 68%. So we're pretty happy with that effort at this point. We were able to also, we had mentioned about having a meeting with the City Attorney and with the Building Inspector. We were able to have a meeting with them, and then the Building Inspector was kind enough to, you know, dust off some of the old boxes and find some old permits, and we appreciate his efforts on that. And there was a special permit that was found from 1995, and when this was the auto dealership, it had to deal with employees, parking, and vehicles to be serviced. So, being that we have a change of use, he suggested, and we agree, that we'll also incorporate a special use permit into this application for the parking and the residential lots there. He also noted that on the plan, at the corner of Conklin Street and Fishkill Avenue, there was a small triangular piece of land that was supposed to be deeded to the city, and that's kind of highlighted in this red area over here. So there was a little triangular piece where the right-of-way gets really close to the edge of pavement in Conklin Street and Fishkill Ave that was supposed to be deeded to the City of Beacon, and we're going to go ahead and make sure that that happens with this one, because we don't think that the deeding actually ever happened. It was on the map, but it never got deeded to the city, so it's just a small legal process of that, doing that. I don't know if it's a quit claim or whatever, we'll figure that out with Jennifer, but... And then we talked a little bit about the fact that the buildings were on the separate lots, and after reviewing some of the information, the building as it lies, it's going to be a little hard to explain with this, but around where my cursor is here is where the building used to be. And then in 1995, this area was added on. So the interpretation is that we have to meet the building code if there's going to be property lines that remain that go through, and that there have to be a to be property lines that remain that go through and that there have to be a firewall there. So, that doesn't line up with where the, where the addition was, where there are walls, so it doesn't work with our layout. So I, I went back to the owners of the property, not the applicant, the owners of the property, and I talked to them about the concept of at least merging the parcels-
The lots with the building.
-that have the building on. Because they're, and they were more willing to do that, they didn't want to merge all six.
Right.
I understand their position on that, but they're willing to merge the parcels that the buildings are on, or the building is on. And I think that'll help us with our layout, with, with avoiding firewalls and, and things like that that wouldn't work with the layout of the cert, you know, the internal circulation of the building that the, that the applicant wishes to use it for, so. And, and then there was the issue about possible cross easements if we didn't merge, so I think I would have to work with Jennifer's office a little bit on that, because I'm not familiar with the process of being able to give yourself an easement, but I think there's ways that we can put restrictions or something else on there for the time being while this site plan is active at least. And then maybe if some other site plan comes in, maybe that can go away, I, I don't know, but I think we can, I think we can figure-
Yeah, the concern is somebody's always going to sell one of the lots off, or ownership changes, still same use, but for financial reasons, ownership changes, you need to be able to have still access-
Right.
-across that.
Yeah.
Right. So I, I think we can figure something out legally that would protect everybody involved. And with that, I, I think, um, we could, we could turn it over to some of the technical comments. I don't really have any issues with any of them. I would note that the, we would, we can change out the scrub oak, I'm not a, I'm not adverse to that. There was scrub oak that was proposed on the three ninety-seven Fishkill Avenue site, so I was just using that as continuity, but maybe we'll change it over to some of the red oaks that were on that site as well. Uh, so I'm happy enough to change those for you. Uh, the white pines are up on hills, actually, so if, if I was to show you the, the, the existing grading, all of the grades from the parking lot go up to the point where the white pines, any of the white pines are proposed, or where some of the white pines exist. So with that being said, I, I don't see salt as being an issue for them, um, and there's curbing on Mead Avenue and Conklin Street, so, um, the white pines that are there, there was one that was dead, and there was one that had fallen over at some point, but I'm not sure why.
Yeah.
But the others seem to be pretty healthy, so I'm, I'm pretty confident that we can, you know, particularly for the, again, for continuity there, I'd rather not have white pines and then, you know, an arborvitae and then white pines again. So, um, we're still, we're still going to propose those if, if that's amenable to you.
Would that back wall still be used as snow storage, like it's currently used on the current property? I think that back strip is kind of where they push all the snow from the parking facility. Do you know where they're planning to do snow storage?
Um, no, I don't know how they would do that necessarily right now. My, my guess is that they'd probably try to get it down towards this area, because we have a, a catch basin there, and the grades naturally go down to that corner, so, which isn't wonderful for my shrub bed that I put there, but, um, if, if-
And the, just for the board, those comments were just about, there's certain plantings that are known to not be very tolerant of salt, right? So, uh, we find that sometimes they get planted and they end up dying, and it just leads to a lot of replacement costs and everything like that, so if you can avoid things that don't particularly like salt, there's going to be a lot of asphalt and snow and salting in the area, so I think, um, but I think what the applicant's saying in terms of targeting, if that's up on a hilly area, that's not going to get a lot of the salt from, from the roads in it and the pines that are being successful there now. But in the front, in the front area where it seems like a lot of the drainage from the site is going to go still towards that front corner, um, those should definitely be more salt resistant, because they're going to pick up everything in the lot and take it to the front.
Great, thank you for that. So as we, I was gonna say, as we kind of complete your initial presentation, and before we go to our consultants for other comments, was there any status you wanted to give on information that you were seeking that you haven't yet? I know that there was in the, in the comment letter, I think there was something about finding out about water capacity, sewer capacity, that there were some, there were some data gaps, and then also a question about, um, coordinating work permits or for the, the work near the street?
Yeah, no, no update from DOT yet on whether or not they would be issuing any kind of highway work permit, or if it's City of Beacon. It's, it's on their inventory as a City of Beacon owned and maintained road, but we'd still like to have the confirmation from them. We've done this on the other projects here where, where the city is responsible for the state road, but just want to get some confirmation from them on that. Uh, the, the water and sewer, we still don't know yet. We were in conversations with Ed Bellicky, um, he had some time off, so, um, we weren't able to-
I spoke with Ed, he said he told you that they have no records-
He, yeah, he mentioned about the water and the sewer mains, I didn't know if he had anything with the services, so I was going to follow up with him on that, but-
He has nothing on the services. I mean, given that's a single-story building, there's no basement in that, correct?
And it's not required for sprinkler on this, so I'm, I'm not really, I'm not necessarily concerned with the size of the water and sewer services, but-
We just like the, the utilities to be complete.
Yeah.
I mean, you may be able to look inside the building and actually see what's coming in.
No, I tried, I tried, it's a slab on grade, so I don't know where it's coming in, so, I know where it comes into the building, but that's the old showroom, and it's all tiled, and there's no, there's no way underneath, so we'll see if we can figure it out. There is, um, there is a valve cap, which makes me think it was a bigger service, actually, at one point, um, not just a regular water shut-off valve.
Either that, or given the number of vehicles driving through there, they may have put an actual valve box, so nothing was pushing down on the stem-
Right.
-into a copper line.
Yeah. So maybe if we can get in there, maybe we can at least see down there, see if it's not silted up and, and see if we can grab it. But we'll, we'll try to, we'll keep trying to figure out what the size of the sewer service is and the water service, and, again, I don't see it as any issue for us, but, but we'll definitely get it on there by the time this is all said and done.
What, what's the deal with this special use permit? Just, you said something about having found it, and then you said something about including an application for it?
Yeah, so the nineteen ninety-five or nineteen ninety-six special use permit that was issued was related to the use of the, of the property as an automobile dealership.
Okay.
And it, it said, it was pretty specific, and I haven't seen it, but I'm, I'm just taking Bruce's word for it, that it was for employee parking and for, uh, parking of vehicles that were to be serviced.
Okay, so then do we, is there any issue with us considering both applications simultaneously?
No, and the, the special permit here is, is under a specific section of your code pertaining to the two residential lots in the back. In that res, because it's a split zone there, in the residential portion, yep, Dan's putting his cursor on the two lots in the back there. In that area, parking, just off-street parking, is not a principally permitted use, but it is permitted if it's in connection with, uh, a use on an adjacent lot, and it's permitted by special permit.
And then this is presumably what we're talking about, merger of some of the lots, addressing as well making the lots adjacent.
Only for the building, I don't, did you-
Well, the lots are, are, are still adjacent-
Yeah, I got it.
-because it, it borders those lots in the front that have frontage on, on Fishkill Avenue. The lots that I think Dan is talking about merging are the ones that are within the building footprint, so those would be merged, the rest of them would remain individual lots, and the special permit would be issued for the two, the, the area in the rear to allow the accessory parking to be on those lots.
In the building footprint, they'd have to build a firewall in the middle of the-
Yeah, it's not related to building code issues. So, in essence, the nineteen ninety-five special permit would not be applicable here. You would need to issue a new special permit to allow the parking on those residential properties in the back.
Does that, do you have to do a CCRE review for that?
Um, no, it's all still type two. It's all still type two, but in essence now you will have before you the site plan application, the special permit for the parking on those lots in the back, and then a subdivision application to merge the lots that are within that footprint. So it'll be three land use applications before you, still all type two under CCRE, still substantively the, the same use, um, the same operations, but three mechanisms to, to get there.
So on that subdivision application, we can include that little triangular piece?
Mm-hmm, and put that on the plat.
At the corner of Conklin.
Yeah.
I would cover at least that.
And you noted the deeding of that in your letter, is that right?
No, I didn't find that out until-
Oh, okay. So that, that's something you're aware of?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And we, we agree to do it, again.
Okay.
Seems like it was intended to have been done, but never followed through on the legal component.
And the other thing that I think Bruce had mentioned in his comments, um, in, in our discussion with you was, um, also confirming ownership. We want to make sure that, I, I don't think a deed was submitted with the application, so we just want to make sure that these are going to be individual lots, that they're each under common ownership, so in the next submission, you submit the-
Yeah, they're all under the DKH real deal, I'll say, but-
Yeah, that would be great if you could submit that for the record.
Okay.
So I think we're on to, do we cover Natalie?
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go to consultants, and thanks Len for sitting in, and-
Welcome.
Thanks, everybody, for your patience. You'd think with the amount of money they charge for a fair, they'd figure out how to fix their engines. So, welcome Natalie, great to see you. Not sure if you were formally introduced, but glad you're here. Natalie is, um, forgive me, the name of your firm?
Uh, KARC.
KARC, our new planner for the city. Also nod to John for all of his years of excellent service, and we look forward to you taking on those shoes, and so glad to have you here, welcome. And so with that, we'll, we'll go to our consultants for any other items you want to highlight, point out for either the board or for the applicant. Obviously, the applicants had the opportunity to review these as well as the board, but just specific things you think we may want to continue to consider as we review it?
Yeah, so I have been working with John Clark as we're kind of doing this transition together, so my letter very much does, uh, mirror his from the last meeting, just picking up on some things that are still a little bit unresolved. The first one I don't think we need to go over again is talking about the, uh, special use permit and the six parcels and potentially merging those. I think my one recommendation was to at least merge the two parcels that the building is sitting on, so it's not a single structure straddling multiple parcels, so I'm glad that the applicant is considering that. The other conversation that is still carried over from the previous meeting is the layout of the parking design. So I think I, I'll reiterate John's comments that this is a significant improvement to the lot in terms of the reduction of the impermeable surfaces and the addition of new landscaping on the site, which is great to see. I just share the recommendation that it, there's just a little bit of an inconvenience of people parking in this facility who are parking on the southern, uh, the southwest portion in that, of that lot to kind of have to walk around and, or walk over the landscaping to get to the building, right? So often you'll see parking lots, I think, out, as it's currently laid out, if you drive past the site and do a site visit, um, the lanes of parking are usually lined perpendicular to the building, so that you would walk down an aisle, you'd get out of your car and walk down an aisle directly to the building. So I think that's the one comment about that efficiency, um, but the applicant, happy to hear them respond, I know they, they felt that this was satisfactory for how folks, um, would be getting from their vehicles to the cars or to the building, so maybe we can just talk a little bit about that.
Mm-hmm.
Landscaping, um, I wanted to just reiterate John's comment from last, I did see that there was new additions of the, um, of planting beds with various heights. I watched the last meeting, and I just kind of heard a comment that maybe the, the front facade and the landscaping with the trees spaced out looked a little bit, I think the word was anemic that was used, and, uh-
I think I said that.
And that there, and I know that there was a concern about sight lines as you're coming in and out of those driveways, so potentially along that front strip, along the, the sidewalk, various heights of plantings could be used, used there. If a tree has to be removed for the sight lines that we're looking for, that might be an opportunity for lower shrubs to kind of fill that in. And while that's both for the stormwater management of the site, it's also just for the visual kind of shielding of that large drive lane in the front and the parking facility where possible, so more variation of plantings and height in the front. And then I just carried over the comments about the lighting plan, um, which we don't yet have, but the applicant is aware of the regulations within the code that they would have to meet, um, and we can review that when that lighting plan is produced.
Great, thank you, Natalie. Um, we'll, we'll come back to what I would consider two subjects we should probably just talk about around the board, see how our input, um, but first, let's, let's touch on anything, John, you might have.
So in addition to what Natalie's discussed, and what we've already discussed with Dan, with regards to the site distances, Dan, there's a note on the plan, um, that talks about that some of the site distance may be impacted by a tree, and one of the sight lines runs through one of your proposed trees.
Yeah.
So, uh, as Natalie said, maybe that tree can be eliminated, relocated, chance to use, uh, low-growing stuff in that area. The other thing with regards to the site distances, I'd like to know what the actual achievable site distance is, I mean, it's just one number given-
Yeah, I don't remember if Rich's report had that.
-left and right for both access points, um-
It's good, but yeah, I can get it.
Yeah, I mean, it's good if we get four hundred and something, but if I can get six hundred, I, I want to know, I'm getting six hundred. There's some cleanup work that has to be done on the plan, there's still some, uh, notifications or call-outs for chain link fence in the back, yeah, that's supposed to be removed, and you need to look at the grading along the front of the site and the sidewalk, there seems to be a hump in the sidewalk near the, the one entrance way, I'm not exactly sure why that's humping up in that area, um, but just take a harder look at the grading along the front of the site. Also erosion control needs to be updated, uh, need to, um, provide some additional protection around the catch basin that's within the island, there's nothing shown for that. I'd like to know which trees specifically are going to be provided with a temporary tree protection, um, and then photometrics for the lighting.
Great, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
So, curious, the last time we met, and obviously again tonight, we're discussing the parking and the layout, and I gleaned from last month that there's some resistance on the part of the applicant just due to cost and whatever else. So, yeah, obviously, when it comes to the parking, we want to make sure that we're doing what's smart, just in terms of the use of the space and the users. What are, what are your thoughts, and what are the applicant's thoughts on-
Yeah, I'd be happy to fill you in on, on our conversations from internal, but, um, we don't see a massive benefit in any change of impervious. In fact, I think, I think it's going to be a wash or, or even more for the parallel as compared to what we have in terms of impervious.
In the area of impervious?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the, the entry come, or the exit, I guess it was an entry and an exit, I don't even remember the sketch right now, but it was, it's too close to Conklin Street, it creates, it creates, it, you know, uh, interferences and, and conflicts with the intersection, and the movement from the cars to go back and forth is much less, um, appealing to our client, as opposed to being able to come in and just do a circle and come back out if needed. And this also, I think, will provide for a better emergency vehicle at entry into the site as well. They didn't feel that, um, it would be an issue for their patrons to be going over any landscaped area or walking within paved area to get to the entrance. It's not uncommon to have to do that in many sites. If you're, um, maybe elderly or, um, not able to physically make your way there, they do have the drop-off zone in front of, of the building, where they would expect that people would just come in, drop off, and then, you know, the more able will, let's say, will be able to, uh, park in that southwest area or whatever, so. The, that being said, they're, they're really also considering the fact that we're trying to maintain those grades as much as we can, because we're, we're trying not to have to rip pavement out and then have to rebuild new because of, of grades and all that, so. Those were all the considerations on our side, and so we're-
So, so what I'm hearing is- So what I'm hearing is, is the applicant is prepared to disregard the recommendations of the board and the board's consultants.
But it's not disregard.
It is what it is.
It's what they prefer.
Any thoughts around the board on the subject of the parking specific to the layout and our consultant's recommendations?
All right, so quiet. I think it's not that bad. I think it's a simple modification of what you have there, it's an improvement, and obviously it's less costly. What John was talking about, John Clark, about having a direct access with, outside of traffic lanes between the building and the parking, is definitely a good principle. You should always try to do that, but this is simpler and easier, and it's not large enough to, I think, make a huge impact.
Good, thanks, Kevin. Anyone else? Thoughts? Oh, by the way, I have to thank you, Natalie, we're down one, John, thank you.
I did, I did notice that I was bringing some variety.
Any thoughts on it?
No.
Okay.
That's not a good thing to say no, but it seems really pleasing and he's on top of it, so.
So I guess what you're hearing from the board is that we won't ride you too hard on that. And then as far as.
Sure, my applicants will be happy about.
Yeah, so, okay, good. As far as our observations on plantings, just bring me up to speed, just in terms of you or your applicant's view as regard to the recommendations.
So the architect really felt like this was the feel he wanted. It's, you know, I, I don't know if I have any argument, you know, I understand the position. I would also say that lower lying areas in there actually could impede some of those site distances, so, you know.
Just curious, are those all new planted trees?
A couple of them are existing. There are, there are two existing along Fishkill Ave. that would stay.
And are they as mature as they're shown here?
The ones that are there.
I've driven by a couple times, but I always forget to look at the trees.
You know, the newer ones aren't going to be quite as mature, obviously.
What height will they be when they're planted?
I believe that we had three inch diameter, or was it four inch diameter? Let's see if I can find the detail.
So what is that, about six feet?
So probably around 10, 10 feet high.
Yeah, three inches is going to be at least eight or better.
So no concern on the height of the canopy at that early age? In terms of sight lines?
Well, that's one concern with the site distances, they're blocking, and that's why Natalie was making the suggestion that that tree could be relocated, some of the trees could be moved, shifted, and infill some of this area in front with some low-lying shrubs.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, and I don't want to sort of rehash what we've already discussed. So again, to that end, any thoughts around the board for the applicant on the subject of trees or plantings?
Just to the extent that I think site distance and safety when, you know, exiting the parking lot is pretty critical, that's like, you know, life safety stuff, so I think that ought to be strongly considered if there is a concern that new plantings are going to impede the ability of a driver to make a good judgment coming out to 52 Fishkill Avenue, that they should, the planning should be revised to encourage safety.
Yep, all right, good. Do you have everything you need?
We'll take a harder look at that.
Yeah.
And also, I just note that it's a little bit of a belly, I think I mentioned this last time, it's a little bit of a belly in between there, and the intent is that that little bit of a belly also sends the stormwater to the south. So water is going to be running off of the travel aisle, let's say, generally towards.
Where's the belly?
Excuse me?
Where's the belly you're talking about in that strip, that grass strip?
In the grass strip, it's a very, it's a very subtle, but.
Just enough to hold on to those plastic bottles and plastic bags that get tossed around?
Well, so in today's configuration, this is all impervious, and it runs down, it runs across the sidewalk. So you have sheet flow of stormwater going across the sidewalk. So now we want to do this new sidewalk, we want to protect that, we want to make sure that people that are walking on it aren't walking across ice. So we've got this little bit of a belly in between there, and then it's also slightly pitched down towards Conklin. So as it goes down, we have culvert pipes underneath the sidewalk entry here, and then underneath this entrance over here, to get it all the way down to the catch basin and into the storm system that's down there. So we don't want to impede that with planting beds necessarily, maybe we can come up with some, you know, quasi-tree, you know, different, different kind of height.
I'm just curious, what type, so my main concern on that strip with plantings is, and you may have touched on this, because it looks like you're putting grass in there. Is that hardy enough and resilient enough to kind of keep up with salts and, you know, oils and whatever? My only concern is that over time that gets either not maintained or just it's just not strong enough to kind of hold up and look good.
Yeah, that's a valid question, I suppose. I haven't really seen many studies on different, you know, grasses necessarily being impacted in that way, but a lot of times we use grass filter strips on sides of parking specifically to remove normally more of an actual sediment. Not an oil necessarily, but I think it's subject to the site plan and them maintaining it as well. So if there are issues with it, it's going to be on them to make sure that they bring it back to a.
Yeah. Is there, is there a species that you could recommend that would give that strip a fighting chance to look green and?
Well, I'll look into it.
Not patchy when it's supposed to?
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Yeah, thanks. All right. Is there anything else we can help you with at the moment? There's nothing, there's no specific action we're planning on taking this evening?
No, I mean, I guess we need to resubmit with a subdivision application then, and with the special use permit application to kind of complete the application now.
Yep.
So I don't know if there is anything we could necessarily do. We still, we agree with Jennifer that it's a type two action in accordance with SECRE, so not necessarily SECRE public hearings or anything, but the subdivision process, we normally have a SECRE subdivision, SECRE process for that if it's not type two, so we would probably just be asking for a public hearing to be set. I don't know if we can do that without the applications now, or if we could get the applications in in a very quick way, just to allow that to happen, or.
Yeah, I think the best step is for the applicant to complete the submission with all the applications, and then at your next meeting, as long as everything's in order, then you can take that next step to schedule the public hearing.
But for now, it can just be adjourned, site plan review to the next scheduled meeting, right?
Exactly, absolutely.
Okay, so move to adjourn to the next scheduled meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't normally do that.
That was fun.
So you've been summarily dismissed. You missed, you missed the rules, so.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just shooting from the hip, wild west here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Have a nice evening. Stay dry.
Don't take it, don't take. Watch out for that flash flood.
Watch out for flooding debris.
Don't write MTA.
I did.
A little aggravated.
You're a little bitter.
I seconded.
For all the years.
I seconded the one three.
Same trains.
Okay, so that was Len.
Len seconded it.
It's in my business and where it's located. I don't know.
So, all the more reason, same trains, I've been riding that line for 22 years, same equipment.
But tell me why am I getting taxed, none of my employees benefit from it?
Here, here. So that completes the agenda items on our regular meeting. We're going to move then to architectural review, for which we have one item, that is a certificate of appropriateness for, this looks like a new sign in the historic district and landmark overlay zone at 135 Main Street. Is that applicant here?
Oh, the P. Pay attention to.
We don't blame you if our conversation isn't scintillating enough to keep you awake.
I'm sorry.
Welcome, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good night, get home safe. So you have an application for a new sign on, I'm assuming this is Main Street?
Yes.
Yes, 135 Main.
Your name?
Yeah.
The store name, my name, my name is Nilla Ferguson.
If you wouldn't mind pulling it. Thank you.
Nilla Ferguson.
Thank you. So just describe briefly for us what your plans are. We have what looks to be the artwork that you submitted to the city, it's part of your application.
Yes.
So, yeah, just give us a little bit more background on it. Are you planning on reusing the existing sign hanging?
Yeah, outside.
Outside, yeah. Anything else you want to share with us?
Is there an existing bracket?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know the name of it, you know, the. Yeah.
Okay, it's, I'm sorry, is that part?
It's like metal.
Yeah. So, so you're using the existing hanger, for lack of a better word, is there, is there a more technical word for that thing?
Bracket?
Bracket, frame, bracket, hanging thing?
Bracket would be a good start.
And are you planning to do anything to that bracket, meaning are you going to paint it or?
No.
No? Okay, so you're going to keep it as is?
Just a sign.
You're just going to take what you're showing us in terms of artwork and stick your sign in there?
I did my own, on a, what do you call that? The wood values? Yeah.
You can do it yourself?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. More power to you, that's wonderful.
So it's an 18 by 24 inch sign?
Yes.
And that is, the material is a wooden sign hanging from the metal bracket, and so it'll be like in a perpendicular to the building. What else would you like to see from the application?
I think that's pretty much it. I would just recommend that if you're using wood, that you use something that's going to hold up over time and weather.
Okay.
Not going to recommend what specifically, but just be sure that it's going to not, you know, start to peel and warp over the next couple of weeks or months. But otherwise, just as far as the size, sounds like you're compliant and the artwork's quite pretty. Forgive me, what is the name of your establishment?
The store name?
Yeah.
Nilla First Home Kitchen.
Yeah, Nilla First Home Kitchen, anytime, tea time.
Anytime is tea time.
Anytime, tea time, yes.
Great.
All right.
Looks nice, it's bright, it's colorful, lovely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or other comments? Accept a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Kevin?
Second.
Second by, oh my gosh.
David.
David, forgive me, it's been a long day. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know your name, it's just, okay, and then it sounds like we, sorry about that. We touched on our rules of procedure during the workshop, so we can entertain a motion to, unless there's any other business.
The only other businesses, do you, well, do you have any, any recommendations for changes on the, that was the only thing that came up as an invitation?
On the rules of procedure?
Or it could be at a future date, but everybody here was invited to consider whether they wanted to discuss changes now or in the future, so.
Yeah, no, we've, we've been, we've been doing this long enough, I think the rules are pretty well combed through, and it's just good to kind of refresh ourselves at the start of every new year, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. I'm just curious, is.
I have a question.
Do not inter, ever. I was just curious.
There is a rule about that in the procedures, that I have to like raise my hand and you have to call me by name.
Be recognized by the chair before you can speak.
That's right, that's the one you all have to remember.
Yes.
Did anyone else have any suggestions for rules, updates, changes? Just curious.
No.
No? Natalie, what you got?
I was wondering for the trainings, the work sessions before, if there's certain topics that the board wanted to have covered or discuss?
Thank you.
Sorry. You're approved, thank you. Sorry about that.
I just have a, I can look back to see what topics Sean has covered, but in case someone had something on their mind that they had wanted to dig deeper in, I'll take, I'm happy to take suggestions and kind of craft trainings around those. So if you want to think on it, you can email me, and I'm happy to kind of incorporate that within the year's training.
Thank you. Yeah, it's usually a mixed bag. It's good that we review the rules, there's intervals at which we tend to touch on SECRE again, because it seems like everybody always needs a refresher on that.
There's a few good DOS trainings that I think we can use, just in terms of being a board member and what's within consideration and things, so can definitely pull from those.
Sure.
But in case there was a hot topic, I'm happy to do some.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Good. I just wanted to bring up one thing that you might want to think about, which is, there's some zoning changes that have been contemplated recently, right? I don't know how fast-tracked they're going to be or whatever.
The parking minimum reductions.
Parking minimums and also, and I've always been, as part of this, I think it'd be helpful for us and for the public to understand better what some of the principles are that are generally accepted professionally on both zoning and also the way that studies are conducted to analyze the demand and supply part of parking, and how that's managed by different communities. Specifically for communities, and this is what I'm always confused, is communities of our size, which is different of cities like Austin or Portland, right?
But smaller, yeah.
And like I said, anything that has to do with those sort of, we're all full of opinions here, right? But I think it's really helpful to have that sort of professional and the generally accepted principles.
Local case studies and things like that, yeah.
Local case studies for cities our size, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more about what cities are doing with affordable housing requirements and affordable senior housing, and how it stacks up to the percentage that we require for new construction.
Yeah, I think it would be good, too, on that subject, to put Beacon in context, just in terms of what we have in place currently, just a kind of level set.
Yeah.
Yep, and how that's, to some degree, with the level of development recently over the past number of years, what that may have translated into in terms of a number of affordable units?
If we've seen any, yeah, impact from that, yeah.
Well, yeah, we have, it's just I think, I don't know if there's been sort of an accounting.
Quantifying it.
Ultimately.
Yeah.
Not all of them will have come online yet, but just with the approved applications of the larger sized applications, and some of the smaller ones that are subject to an affordable unit requirement, it'd be kind of good to get a sense of where we're at now.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of my concerns have been driven just by learning lately about the kind of waitlist lengths that are out there in Beacon and in the surrounding communities, like, you know, a year or two years or more. I think some of our affordable housing, the waitlists are closed, some of the affordable senior housing, they're looking at a one to two year waitlist. I talked to Pastone and Fishkill, their voucher apartments have three to five year waitlists. It seems like there's a real dearth of affordable housing in Douglas County and.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Cool.
That was easy.
Yeah.
Go back to the question.